You are muted.
Good evening, welcome to the League of Women Voters of Carrollton Carroll County Candidate Forum for the Carroll County Commission Race District Five. Want to welcome everybody and briefly tell you that some things about the League of Women Voters. And the number one thing to remember is that we are nonpartisan, namely in candidates and in and in political parties, but when a person is elected, then it is our responsibility to hold them accountable. So we're going to start right away. I want to introduce Gila Gonzalez. She is our Zoom Coordinator and Walter Dandleker is our Time Keeper. And he's already showed the candidates how the time will be displayed. Want to introduce our candidates. That would be James Fulford, who just disappeared. No, he's still there. James Fulford and Lee Powers and Ernest Reynolds. So without delay, I'm going to go ahead and start with the questions. The first question, oh, no, we start with the opening statements. Each of you will have two minutes for an opening statement. We'll start with Mr. Fulford and then go to Mr. Powers and then Mr. Reynolds. So Mr. Fulford, begin, please.
All right. First, we'd like to say thank you to the League of Women Voters for bringing this forum together and to all those who worked behind the scenes to put this together. But my name is James Fulford. I'm running for District Five Commission to serve Carroll County. I've grown up here. I've been in Carroll County since I was three years old. My mother was actually born and raised in Bowdoin, Georgia. Got my education from Carrollton City Schools. From that point, I attended University of West Georgia where I received a degree in finance and real estate. After that, I went to West Georgia Technical College and received a certificate in computer aided drafting. I've had the fortune of working a lot of my life. I started my working career very early on at the age of 13. My father has a locally owned builder supply. I worked there from 13, part time, and I grew up into the business and worked there full time once I graduated high school. Through college, I worked with my father, had the opportunity to go into business with him in 1999. We created our own small business company working for home builders. Worked with him up until 2004, when I transitioned my career path into banking. I worked in banking for nine years up until 2013. The Great Recession had a little impact to financing home builders at the time. Had the fortune of actually taking a career path, working with the Board of Education, serving as the Chief Financial Officer for the Carroll County Board of Education for four years. I oversaw the Finance and Business Department and we maintained a budget of 120 plus million for about 15,000 children. Had an opportunity to present itself three years ago. I came back to the banking career and I currently work for Banco ZK as a commercial construction manager. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so next is Mr. Powers. Wait just a minute, Mr. Powers.
I would like to thank y'all for having this forum tonight and thank the citizens for watching it and looking at each one of us as candidates. My name is Lee Powers. I've lived in White'sburg for the past 20 years. I've been married to my wife Sandy for the past 29, close to 30. I have two amazing daughters, Emily and Kendall. I've been in business now since 1992 and we've been in business through some tough times and we've been in business through some good times. In Carroll County, in our state, in our county, in our state and in our country, are facing some hard, very hard times right now, some hard decisions. And I think that we need a proven leader that has been through hard times and been through business when it's been difficult, especially through the Obama years. And we need a proven leader that understands the decisions that are going to have to be made in our county. I really love Carroll County. I do, I love the farm life. I've been in business, I am a general contractor, commercial, do a few residential's, not much. But my love is my farm and protecting the farmland and the way of life that Carroll County has, especially District Five, is very, very important to me and has always been important to me. And that's one of the main things that drives me and wants, that makes me want to serve as a commissioner. I love serving others. I love, I am a Christian and I love serving God and I love serving others. And I humbly ask y'all for your support in upcoming election on June the night.
Okay, thank you very much. I want to remind the candidates that in our protocols, it says that you may not name another political figure. And so we need to avoid that. So next is Mr. Reynolds.
Hello. I'm currently your District Five County Commissioner and I can say I have thoroughly enjoyed that responsibility. It is a great responsibility. I have gotten very positive feedback from constituents routinely about my transparency, letting you know what's going on in your county government. I believe that's very important. To my surprise, that has been touted as kind of a rare thing, but I want to change that. And also, I have gotten very positive feedback about my responsiveness. I probably handle concerns and issues that are brought up to me and I have the time to do that. I have retired from 34 years with the State Auditor's Office. On the personal side, let me say, I've lived in Carroll County for 40 years. We've raised our family here. My son and daughter have both gone to Rootville, gone through the central middle and high school and on to UWG. My son wanted to work for us also, but we have our roots here and really love Carroll County. My entire life, I have lived agricultural lifestyle and raised cattle by parents and grandparents. My wife's dad was probably the largest dairy farmer in the Southeast. So I'm very familiar with driving tractors and putting up hay and so on. But on the professional side, I have 34 years with the State Auditor's Office, was Deputy Director there and had my certificate of Government Financial Manager and Certificate of Fraud Examination and won the National Conference of State Legislators Program Impact Award. So I know conservative government leadership and I worked with the governor and legislative leaders. I retired there as Deputy Director about three years ago. I got my court mediator license and now work for the magistrate court in Carroll County. I've served on the Board of Equalization of Carroll County, resolving disputes between.
That's all the time that you have right now. So, okay, we're going to go right into questions. And the first question will go to Mr. Fulford. You will have a minute and a half to answer your questions. I'm going to repeat the questions two times. You might want to jot down something that you find in the question. The first question, what do you see as the most pressing needs specifically for your District Five?
Okay, thank you. Some, I don't really have anything that's sticking out really most pressing, but I would say really the support of the county for the district. One of the things that I've talked with many of the constituents about is our inability to be cohesive as a unit, as a government, both from, it could be the Tax Assessor's Office to the Tax Commissioner's Office, but working better for our taxpayers, making life easier for them. Obviously, for Carroll County District Five, it's a very rural district and it encompasses a lot of different geographic areas. So each little nuance of their area has probably specific needs that need to be addressed. But overall, it's just making Carroll County's government work better for their taxpayers and for those in District Five.
Okay, thank you. Next answer is from Mr. Powers. Mr. Powers, you're going to have to unmute yourself.
I think the most is having a leader that will listen and a leader that's willing to fight for the district and what our district stands for. I mean, there's a lot of needs in District Five and broadband is one of them. And working with the state leaders and the local power companies and stuff. And when I was in there before, we started looking into all that. That's a big, the broadband is one of the largest needs that we have. But we also have a lot of roads and some areas that needs to be addressed. And I think that the citizens also, they need a leader that would listen and be able to take care of their needs as they come in. But I think that that when we look at our budget and our finances, that there's going to have to be some cuts made and that's going to affect the needs of District Five and it's going to affect whole Carroll County. But I think that one of the largest, the largest needs that we need in District Five is also protecting the way of life that we have also and careful what we allow to come in District Five.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Reynolds.
Yes, there are a lot of advantages in Carroll County. I think we have great cooperation among the departments and among the sheriff and all of the departments throughout government. But the big things that I see and have been expressed to me by my constituents is the need for rural broadband and cell tower. Rural broadband is a big thing, as we just experienced here, getting on with connectivity. I'm pushing for that. I'm pushing EMCs. I'm keeping up with our state legislators on that. Another thing is SPOST funding. I have worked hard to get that more transparent, to let the taxpayers know who pay the bills, where their SPOST money is going and how much money we have. And there's also the admin building discussion and where we need to go with that. On the deal of budgeting, we need to ensure that there is conservative budgeting, but simultaneously ensure that we retain and reward the best and brightest in Carroll County and we don't negate future middle management and have gaps in Carroll County government that we can't resolve.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll go on to question two and Mr. Powers will answer this question first. If elected, what one part of Carroll County government, other than your district, should receive more attention? Choose one and discuss. Let me repeat it. If elected, what one part of Carroll County government, other than your district, should receive more attention? Choose one and discuss.
I think that we need to take care of our county employees and our first responders. And I understand that when I was a commissioner last time, that our fire department and our sheriff's department are losing a lot of employees every day to the local, to the other local counties around, our surrounding counties. And I think, other than my district, I think that we need to fix that one problem. We need to, there's a problem with the number of calls that comes into 911 center. And a lot of, we have to send our fire trucks and stuff out every time. And we need a, and I was working on that before I left. And actually, I was able to secure six ambulance in our district, also help take care of the response times. But our citizens need the response times that we need, but we also need a truck that's not as large as a fire truck, that would be a first responder truck that can get to the people and get to them quickly and evaluate their needs and see if there is a need for ambulance or a fire truck right away. But I think that other than our district, I think that would be one of the most pressing need in Carroll County.
Okay, thank you. And next, Mr. Reynolds.
I can honestly say that during my tenure, I have enjoyed 10 months of great rapport with every department. The roads department has been exceptional in responding to everything that I've brought to their attention. Community development and codes have responded very timely to everything from complaints about barking dogs to trashy yards and all the other departments. We have funded increases in the fire department, increases in 911, upgrading that entire system. I voted for all of that in the budget. This year is money for more deputies in the sheriff's office. I'm glad about that. We need to take care of all of our county employees. The only office that, as you know, I have heard about that has had problems is the Tax Assessor's Office. But I'm very glad to know that steps are being taken there to correct those. And I think we're on the right progressive steps there to turn around that department. It's great that we can work together to do that. And I look forward to working together with all of the departments in the future and funding conservatively, but also, like I say, funding enough so that we retain the best for Carroll County and don't get into a problem with middle management down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Mr. Fulford, you answer next.
Yes, so I'd have to reiterate their, echo their comments. Really, truly, it's about getting our county employees up to the proper pay to both retain and recruit the capable employees to do what we need to do, not just today, but going forward. I've seen it in multiple departments where we're basically a training ground for other counties to recruit after we've gone through the initial cost of training employees. Our surrounding counties tend to pay employees higher than we do. And I think for me, it's getting our staff and our employees the proper pay and retaining those knowledgeable people to continue to carry Carroll County's pulse.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll go on to question three and Mr. Reynolds will answer this question first. Should any part of the county budget be shielded from cuts? If so, which area and why? I'll repeat that. Should any part of the county budget be shielded from cuts? If so, which area and why?
Well, this is a very unique time. I'll get to the more precise answer on that in just a minute. But with all the COVID upheaval, we really don't know where the budget's going to head in three or four months. So my guidance to my fellow commissioners has been, look, let's be frugal and be nimble so that we can adjust the budget quickly if we need to. But the county fortunately is in a great financial position. We have 15 to 17 million in the bank and reserve. Look forward to having that at the beginning of the next fiscal year. That gives us a little cushion to work with. We don't want to blow through that. So we are taking cautionary steps to preserve that cushion, but it's good to have it there. I don't think there's a need for anything now to be cut, but I do admire that we were able to cut the operations manager position from the commissioner's office. I think, goodness, we've got MBA degrees and smart people on the commission so we don't need somebody else in there to work with our great leaders of departments.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fulford, please answer that question.
Yes, so the question was, which any part of the county budget should be shielded? And I would say at this time, it would be our Carroll County Sheriff's Department. Over the years, I've watched the budget and they have had an underfunded budget of excess of over a million dollars throughout the previous few years. And as our county continues to grow, what we don't want to do is continue to add stress on a department that's already underfunded and understaffed. We need to do everything we can because emergency management services are very critical to our county. So I would work to protect Sheriff's Department first and foremost.
Okay, and Mr. Powers, please answer that question.
Yes, I think that we should always shield our first responders, most definitely the sheriff's office, but the fire department too, and always make sure that we have the right funding for the ambulance service also. I know that we are in some tough times right now and I fought to get our fund balance up when I was in there last time and I'm thankful that we have a strong fund balance. But the fact remains is there's a lot of unknowns in our budget that, because of the tax revenue being down. And so I think that we need to keep a good pulse on that. We also need to encourage our small business to get up and get running and we've got to take care of our small businessmen. They are the engine that drives the workforce out here and we need to make sure that we take care of them. And I think if we can help get them going again, I think the revenue will start flowing. And once the revenue starts slowing again, I don't think there'll be any needs in cutting. But to answer your question, the only one that I would shield definitely is the first responders, of all first responders and any essential employee, the roads department, anything to keep our, to keep the engines running. So that's my answer.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Reynolds, did you answer that question? Yeah, yeah. Now we're going on to question number four and Mr. Fulford will be the first one to answer this question. What do you see as the most pressing need or needs for infrastructure or capital projects in Carroll County? I'll repeat that. What do you see as the most pressing need or needs for infrastructure or capital projects in Carroll County?
I would have to say for infrastructure needs, obviously water and sewer capacity in our roads. We've had a great spurt of growth over the years and our county has done the best of what they have. But if we don't continue to maintain these roads and maintain that infrastructure that allows for proper water service and sewer service, it's not in the county, but it is relevant to the growth of our overall county. But without proper road maintenance and water capacity, it's going to hinder our ability as a county to continue to maintain our current services for our citizens and growth.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Powers?
Definitely the roads and making sure that we maintain the roads. We have a lot of rural area in our county and a lot of elderly people. They rely on the stripes and the side, the white lines along our rural roads. And we all need, we need to make sure that we get that stuff taken care of. I know that when I was commissioner before, that my phone rang all the time and I answered every time it rang and a lot of it was our roads and it was elderly citizens that are driving home from church and other places at night and they rely on that white line on the side of the road. So most definitely it would be the keeping our roads in good order for our citizens and also protecting our watershed, Lake Seaton and the new reservoir that's being built so we'll have through the droughts, that we'll have adequate water for our citizens.
Thank you. Mr. Reynolds, could you answer that question, please?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds, you need to unmute yourself and we'll begin.
Okay, is, you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Government in Carroll County had, I think, great need for internet service, of course, water and roads, repaving them, restriping them. And I have dealt with miles upon miles of that since I took office, as well as three new bridges that are being built and also improvements to the roundabouts in Rootville. But I think there's one thing, the admin building decision that needs to be dealt with. And we are working on that and what to do with that because the voters in 2013 were voted on that and expected us to do something. And so we need to have a decision made about that.
Okay, thank you. Next, Mr. Powers, you answer this question first. If elected, do you plan to promote any changes to existing taxes? If so, what and why? I'll repeat. If elected, do you plan to promote any changes to existing taxes? If so, what and why?
Last time I was elected, I ran on that I would not raise the millage rate. I think that that's the easy way out for the politician to raise money. And I'm not for raising the millage rate, so absolutely not. I'm not planning on raising taxes. Matter of fact, I will not raise taxes. The, I think there's other ways that we can raise revenue. And I would, it's very, very important that we really push the SPOST. I know it's going to be up this November and we really need to get the word out that the citizens really need to pass that because a lot of our road projects are done through that money. Matter of fact, I would say most of the Charles Pope budget is through the SPOST. And it's very important if we keep, to keep our roads up and our infrastructure up through the SPOST dollars. So as far as raising taxes, I'm out on that, but I would look for other ways to raise revenue and I have some good ideas. And I've suggested when I was on the board before how we could do it. So that's what I would do if I was, when I'm reelected.
Mr. Reynolds, could you answer that question?
Yes, can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Likely, I said in the same question posed by Star News in its last publication, I am steadfastly opposed to raising the millage rate. I think it is always a burden on the property and homeowners of this county. And like I said in that publication, they are easy prey for raising money for the county. And I am sticking up for the homeowners and landowners of this county. I think they bear enough of the burden. SPOST is great because 40% actually of that revenue, as I understand it, comes from people buying things, the sales tax on people buying things from outside the county. So it's a very fair tax and it brings a good bit of revenue to the county, like you've already heard, for roads and construction and so forth. But I will not be at all raising the millage rate. We have enough now on our property and homeowners. And I'm glad also that the Tax Assessor's Office has recently taken steps to move forward toward getting their fair tax share from cell tower. That was a problem in that we were absolutely dead in the water and did not know if we were getting the proper amount of tax from cell tower equipment or not.
Okay, thank you so much for that answer. Mr. Fulford?
So the question was, changes to any existing taxes. I do concur, SPOST is something that we, our county must have. It is the most vital way to help with our infrastructure and our facility needs. Property taxes really is driven by our budget needs. You know, we're headed in an unknown times ahead of us and I recall my time serving on, you know, at the Board of Education now, when property values decrease, if that were to occur. It's a situation where you hate to talk about a millage rate increase, but it depends on what the budget needs off of the county to address its services. It's an unpopular conversation. No one likes it and no one wants to see a millage rate increase to raise property taxes. But it depends on where our budget drives in the future as to what those needs are and how do we address it? Of course, we want to try to go after any tax dollars that are available through the corporate side of the world before we stress our taxpayers in regards to private landowners. But most definitely look for every possible avenue and SPOST being a major support.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to go on to question number six and Mr. Reynolds will answer this question first. What current county level policies or programs do you consider to be most effective in helping current existing companies to expand and add workers in Carroll County? current existing companies to expand and add workers in Carroll County? I'll repeat that. What current county-level policies or programs do you consider to be most effective in helping current existing companies to expand and add workers in Carroll County?
Well, first, I'd like to say I think we have done a great job through this COVID experience, and it is ongoing. So yes, there have been some hiccups and some places where we could have done better, but overall, I think we've taken good steps to make sure that as best as possible, we contain the infection as well as get back on our feet in the downside now. I just hope it does not recur, and we are ready for that if it does. We also have a great Chamber of Commerce to work with, and they do a tremendous job in bringing us suggestions as well as bringing new industry to the area and working on expansions. They have brought us a certain tax breaks for companies. I don't like to overdo that for large companies, because it just puts the burden on someone else. But altogether, I think we have a good economic side through our Chamber of Commerce, and I was able to appoint a great person, Mr. Dwayne Hicks, from my area on the Economic Development Board. And I am very pleased with Carroll County and its ability to retain good industry. And my, my main thing now is just to make sure that we don't do damage with this COVID to any more than we have to, our retail shops and so on.
Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Fullford, would you answer that question?
I think the best policy we have is really addressing the tax abatement for our corporate companies that we're recruiting, and obviously, that's a multi-level approach. It takes the Carroll Tomorrow Group along with our Chamber of Commerce and our Carroll County government. But having that tax abatement in place allows these companies to expand, and it's measured. Obviously, they're going to recruit new employees, those people hope to settle in Carroll County, and they'll pay taxes. But the great piece of the abatement is it's a declining deferment over 10 years. So within the 10-year timeframe, they'll be back to paying 100% of their fair share, but it is the best policy we have right now to address that.
Thank you. Mr. Powers?
Without a doubt, our biggest asset is our chamber and Carroll Tomorrow, and also our college over, West Georgia College and Small Business Department over there that are looking for new businesses all the time and helping businesses out that we have here. But working with the chamber and working with Carroll Tomorrow and the Burson Center and the folks with West Georgia College, I think that's our biggest assets that we have to bring new industry into our county. And I look forward to get back working with them again and helping our small business, our small businesses to thrive, especially through the, this COVID thing. I know that there's a lot of the small businesses that are hurting, and some may not ever open again, but whatever we can do to help them and give them a boost and help the small businessman out, I'm right there with them, and I will do everything I can do to protect them.
Thank you. So now we're going to question number seven. The last question was about existing businesses and companies. This question, what are the effective ways Carroll County is presently attracting new business to the county? What new ways would you suggest? I'll repeat that. What are the effective ways Carroll County is presently attracting new businesses to the county? What new ways would you suggest? We're starting with Mr. Full.
That's going to be a difficult question to answer. As far as new ways, obviously, the world of business is changing dramatically in the last 20 years. You know, one of the things that are key to us is having the right infrastructure, having all the DSL lines, any broadband that we can have. I think we've just got to work with these cutting-edge companies and see what their needs are. Obviously, one of the bigger issues we have as a county is, from what I gather from other counties, is being able to recognize what they call super sites. If you don't have large-scale tracts of land that are available for development, you're basically written off day one. So it, we may not can recognize a thousand-acre parcel, but collectively, you know, with multiple landowners, we can. But if we don't have those sites available, from what I've been told by other economic engines, is we're not even on the radar.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Powers?
Can you repeat that question one more time, please?
Sure, I'd be glad to. What are effective ways Carroll County is presenting, is presently attracting new business to the county? What new ways would you suggest?
I think working with Carroll Tomorrow and the chamber, I think, again, like I just said a while ago, that they're our biggest asset to attract them. They know the businesses that are out there, and they know that they've got a good pulse on where they're looking and what their needs are. Carroll County, we have a lot of great businesses that are here, and we have a lot of land that along I-20 corridor that we could bring in some good businesses. But there again, I think that we need to work really, really hard with Carroll Tomorrow and our chamber and let them continue to do their job and looking out for the county, because I really do think they do a great job.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Reynolds?
I agree, the way to attract business to the county, I would say Chamber of Commerce, UWG, and our Technical College, they continue to do a tremendous job. But I would also echo the need for broadband. It is critical, not just in the rural area here in District Five, but throughout the county, it's critical to have good broadband service for schools and the schoolchildren, for our university and Technical College students, as well as for the agricultural and farmers in the entire area that sell their goods over the electronic markets and get beef cattle prices over those markets and so on. I would say that I'd like to emphasize, though, that District Five is agriculture primarily, and I don't see us having any smokestack industry down here in District Five. We want to maintain this as an agricultural area, and the people like that lifestyle, and I love it too. So I think altogether, though, as a county, we're doing a good job in attracting business through those entities I mentioned.
Carroll County population is approximately 120,000, but Caucasian or white population in Carroll County is 70% of that. The African-American or black population is 19%, and the Hispanic or Latino population is 7%. Do you think the county's hiring practices and workforce should reflect the county's demographics? And if so, what will you do to support these hiring practices? I'm going to repeat the last question. Do you think the county's hiring practices and workforce should reflect the county's demographics? And if so, what will you do to support these hiring practices?
You broke up, am I supposed to answer that first?
Well, it's actually only one question. The question is, do you think the county's hiring practices and workforce should reflect the county's demographics? And if so, what will you do to support those hiring practices?
And that's for Mr. Powers.
Okay, that's, okay, I thought, for some reason, I lost the internet, I'm sorry. I believe in hiring the, am I in, am I on now?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I believe, I believe in hiring the most qualified person, whether it's a black person, white person, Mexican person, Latino, whatever. I believe in hiring the best qualified person for the job that the county, that the job that we need for the county. I do, I do not believe in racism, I do not believe in showing any partiality to anybody. I believe in interviewing for the, for the job that we have and that we need, and I believe in hiring the very best person for that particular job. And I think the county does a good job with that. I think that, that we've got, I mean, the county just elected a lady to, for our new chairman. So I think that we are diverse county. Our mayor in Carrollton is a lady, and so I think that we do a good job, and I think that the county, the citizens have done a good job, and I just believe in hiring the right person for the right job, no matter if it's a female, or if it's male, or what race they are. I think the most, I think we get the best qualified people by interviewing them and making sure that we are hiring the best person for the job that we have for the position.
Thank you. Mr. Reynolds?
Yes. Well, and at the state level, of course, as Deputy Director in the State Audit Department, there were probably 350 employees altogether, and I oversaw many of them and several teams of auditors. I never had any racial problems or anything. I am, of course, certainly for hiring the best and the brightest, and I think in large part, yes, our county workforce should reflect the demographics of the county. I would, though, say that we shouldn't go out and hire just based on quotas to make that happen. We should ensure that our hiring practices are equal opportunity and have very good protocols in place to ensure that. We also need to make sure that we retain the best and the brightest, and we do that through good evaluations and feedback and making sure that we can reward those people who are rewarding us. And I've always stuck up for my employees at the state level and had a great reputation of that, and I will do the same for the county.
Thank you. Mr. Fullford?
Yes, so our hiring practices, in my opinion, should not reflect our demographics. However, it's the, it's the employee pool we have to work with. I think what we should do is to practice encouraging more people to apply. We are on the western part of the state, so we have been rural for a long time, and it's really just promoting the county in the right way. But I am all for having good diversity in all areas of our county, both in private and public. So I would do whatever it takes to encourage that. However, you know, we still, we get applicant pools, and we choose from the most qualified Africans, regardless of race or anything.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going on to question nine, and Mr. Reynolds will answer this question first. Carroll County's land use plan designates most of South and West Carroll County as rural and agricultural. Do you support keeping this plan as is? And if so, what presently is our county government doing to keep it this way, and what would you suggest to further maintain it? I'll repeat that. Carroll County's land use plan designates most of South and West Carroll County as rural and agricultural. Do you support keeping this plan as is? And if so, what presently is our county government doing to keep it this way, and what would you suggest to further maintain it? And Mr. Reynolds answers first.
Okay. Can you hear me? I didn't see the unmute button this time.
No. Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, good. Well, I do believe and support our land use plan, certainly. And I do believe and support that the South and West portion, the District Five portion, remain rural and agriculture. I think we are doing a good job of that during my 10 months on the board. There was an industry going to go in on Highway 27, and we negated that. We have good zoning practices, and I think a good planning and zoning board, as well as good people on the Board of Commissioners that will uphold that. And I, for one, am certainly not for populating or putting in small parcel subdivisions at all. We need to ensure that our growth is along designated growth quarters in our land use plan, and I think we're doing a good job of that, and we need to just make sure that we keep that up, and we don't, we don't get the wrong kind of growth in District Five, because there's a great appreciation out here for our rural type of lifestyle, and I want to retain that and work for my constituents so that they can enjoy that for decades to come.
Thank you. Mr. Fullford?
Yes, so with, the South and the West is primarily agricultural, and I perceive that staying for a long time, mainly because of the revenue impact that they have, both to Carroll County and to our state as a whole. I read some data the other day that Carroll County is the 12th best-producing state from agricultural GDP in all 159 counties. So it has a reason for maintaining its rural status. It's, we've made our lives out of Carroll County and that southern region for agricultural production. You know, however, rural doesn't mean stay rural for rural sake. We will never have a lot of growth out there, mainly due to not having infrastructure. But I do believe in keeping our county on the path that our citizens deserve and want, and as long as the demand is there, and as long as the desire to continue to be a producing agricultural community, I support that wholeheartedly.
Thank you. And Mr. Powers?
Yes, I will keep Carroll County, the District Five rural. And, you know, we have an enemy knocking on Carroll County's door right now, and it's called urban sprawl. And the metro Atlanta is trying their best to come out here and ruling the way of life that we have in District Five. And I've been through the whole district, talking to the citizens and discussing the rural way of life. And one thing that we do, we do produce a lot of cows, and we do produce a lot of ag. We also have, our chicken business is great, and if we do not protect the rural way of life, and if we do not protect our land, that's what, our land is where we generate most of our revenue. And if we start allowing the wrong kind of developments to come, not just in District Five, but in Carroll County, subdivisions, they do not pay for themselves. And I have a very good grasp over land use and what we need to allow to come into our county, and why we need to allow, what we allow to come in our county, because that is what produces the revenue that we have to have for our police and our fire and our ambulance and our roads. And so, yes, anybody that knows me knows that I want to protect the rural heritage of Carroll County, and the reason why I want to protect them is because of the way of life that we love so much here in Carroll County.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fullford?
I've already answered.
You already answered that, okay. Okay. So the next question does go to Mr. Fullford first. A comprehensive cultural arts program can greatly enhance the quality of life for residents and attract new businesses. What is currently offered in Carroll County, and what do you see as the role of the government in supporting the arts?
Well, I think Carroll County is actually very fortunate because of the university, and we, I feel like we already get a lot of major support from both our city governments and our county governments, and with our school systems. We all have, we've got multiple cultural arts facilities. I could probably name four or five. You've got the Townes and Arts at the University, you've got Carroll County Schools Cultural Arts Center, Carrollton City, and the City Schools have one. This is a conversation that comes up with a lot of younger population, is it's... You, this is a conversation that comes up with a lot of younger, uh, population is, it's, they want to see more of the arts. Uh, I think we have to listen to, to our population and the different demographics and, and see what they're missing. Is it, is it actual theater or what? I don't know. But I do believe the arts gives a good work-life balance. We've got a great, uh, we've got a great, uh, community here with both business, but, uh, the arts and, and, and leisure give you that ability to relax and enjoy the community that you live in. But I just think we just need to stay connected to those that, that enjoy it and, and myself, I appreciate it. But for those that live it every day, we just really need to understand what we can do to support them better.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Powers?
I have a problem with unmute. Uh, I think that we do a good job promoting, uh, promoting it. And, um, I think Charity Arrington is doing a good job that, with the cultural arts, uh, program in, in Carroll County. I think the school with a, with a new building that they built off the bypass. I think that was a, a, a big asset to the county. And, uh, and I think that, uh, I, I personally think that we're doing a very good job right now. And I think that, uh, the county, uh, school system and, and this, the city of Carrollton with theirs. Uh, I think that, uh, that we have, um, have what it, what, what the students need to, to, uh, use. And, um, and I, and I'm very proud to have what we have in Carroll County.
Great. Uh, Mr. Reynolds?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, I've, I've lost the screen on my side, so I can't tell when I'm, uh, in or out. So I, I do think we have great rapport, uh, between our, our county and our city governments, as well as school systems. The, uh, U W G and our West Georgia Tech are, uh, tremendous, uh, assets in our community as far as, uh, education, of course, and cultural arts. I do think the, uh, School Board and, uh, Dr. Scott Coward, uh, has promoted the arts. And I, I don't think, uh, there's any more at the present time that we need to do. Uh, I do enjoy, uh, going to several of the plays and concerts and so on that we have. But, uh, I don't feel like, uh, more funding or more activity is needed in that area right now. But on the education side, of course, uh, the school budgets are not a part of our, uh, jurisdiction. That's, that's the school board's jurisdiction entirely. So I leave that up to them. And of course, U W G, uh, I think has a, a tremendous influence on the arts in the area as well.
Okay, thank you. Now, our next question is question eleven and Mr. Powers will answer it first. Likewise, carefully planned recreation and health resources enhance the quality of life for residents and attract new businesses. What is your favorite county enhanced recreation or health resource? Expand on that. I'll repeat the question. Likewise, carefully planned recreation and health resources enhance the quality of life for residents and attract new businesses. What is your favorite county enhanced recreation or health resource?
Well, my favorite is Macintosh and the trails that are out in, in Macintosh. And, and when I was on the board, we approved some, um, my, mountain bike trails on, on Moore's Bridge, uh, on, on, in that park. And, and that's underway right now of, of creating and, and, uh, making the, the trails for the, the, uh, the mi- mountain bikes. But I also, um, I also love the green belt. I mean, we all need to get out and do a little exercise sometimes. And I've, I've been, I actually bought a bicycle and I've been using the green belt a good little bit. But, uh, but, but my favorite would have to be Macintosh, um, and that park and the trails. And, um, as my children was growing up, we used to go and I'd pick them up on school on Friday and we'd go camping out and I would take our horses and we'd ride and walk the trails and look at the nature, look at the river and, um, and, and do a little fishing down there. So that's my favorite. And, uh, and we really, uh, I know my family has really enjoyed the parks. And, and, and Macintosh is definitely my favorite, uh, of, of all of them.
Okay, okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Reynolds, what's your favorite?
Okay. Well, I, I would have said the same thing as Lee, uh, if had I gone first. The, the Macintosh Park, uh, when our children were little, growing up, uh, we had five horses and we'd load them all up and take them over to Macintosh, uh, every weekend and ride horses there. So that, that is the favorite of mine. Since I took office and even before, uh, I've talked with Jerry and Angie Stillberg, who are heavily involved with, uh, uh, Macintosh Park and part of Friends of Macintosh Group. There are things going on now that I've promoted and worked with them and, and others, uh, in the, the Whitesburg area to connect Macintosh Park with, uh, Moore's Bridge and to promote the Moore's Bridge area and its, uh, heritage and history there. And connect those two with the Chattahoochee Bend State Park that's just across the river. In fact, we're looking now at, down the road where we might build a bridge to connect the trails of Macintosh and Moore's Bridge to Chattahoochee Bend. That would be a, a, a great thing in my mind and bring extra tourism dollars and, uh, to the Whitesburg area. And we don't want to leave out Banning Mills as a private entity. They offer a lot in that area too. So I think the connectivity in those parks, uh, will be a great thing. And I'm, I'm working on that and working with the, the industries involved with that and different, uh, private and public groups that will hopefully be able to get that done and bring a little more tourism to that area. But we have, uh, a, a great asset in Macintosh Park, great.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Now it's Mr. Fulford's turn. What's your favorite? Oh, I'm, yeah, there we go.
We have, we have a lot of great parks and wrecks around the county. But for something that I see most every day, because we're driving into the city, is the green belt. You look at the activity that the green belt has seen over the last few years. I mean, it's, it's used heavily every day, even more so in its current times. But, uh, I think it promotes just camaraderie and, and, and communications with your neighbors and seeing some of our, um, our great, my Heilstein's areas, uh, over around Lake Carroll and other areas of the county that have gone hidden for so, so many years. And also, even though it's a private entity, uh, banning mills, it's, it's a huge recruitment tool. Uh, and they offer a lot of resources down there for, for citizens and other county, uh, counties as well for business attraction. But, uh, definitely the green belt.
Great, wonderful. All right, now we have our last question and that goes first to Mr. Reynolds. If elected, what would you do to ensure a good working relationship between the county and our municipalities? I'll repeat that. If elected, what would you do to ensure a good working relationship between the county and our municipalities?
Okay. Well, uh, I think the same thing that I've been doing the last ten months. I have ensured a, a good relationship between the, uh, city and, uh, Carrollton, as well as the cities in my district, which are Rootville and Whitesburg. For example, I found out that, uh, Whitesburg was not applying for a local maintenance and improvement grant funds from, uh, the state, which is basically free money that they can get to, uh, pave roads and, and make road improvements in their area. So several, uh, people came to me from Whitesburg and wanted, uh, roads improved in that area and so on. And, uh, I asked our roads department if we could do that. And they said, well, no, because, uh, they're not applying for the O M A fund. So I'll make a long story short, I, I worked with, uh, the city council, uh, people there in Whitesburg and they applied, we got the funds and, and now funds are available through, uh, the state D O T to repave roads and so on in the Whitesburg area. Also working with the, the mayor of Rootville to correct and improve that roundabout there. That's a very dangerous situation as cars fly by, um, Highway five. So, uh, I think we, we already have a good relationship. And I certainly will do nothing to damage that and, and love working with both the Whitesburg and the, uh, Arupho, uh, local government leaders.
Thank you. Mr. Fulford?
Yes, ma'am, I, I think it's very critical, not just for the camp, the municipalities in District Five, but I think it is very important that we build those relationships with those, uh, those in charge of each municipality, whether it be Temple, Villareca, the city of Carrollton. Those relationships are how, how we are going to unify our county as a whole. And we can understand their needs and, and then obviously every municipality has overarching needs, but some are different than others. But, uh, if, if you don't have that teamwork and that understanding, we can't, we can't get our, keep our county going forward. So it is very critical that, and, and I don't mean just the governing bodies. It could be the police departments, it could be the water departments, uh, and understanding how they all work together. But very much so, it's critical to me to, to get to know those people and, and work well with them and build a, a very tight relationship so we can keep Carroll County going forward.
Great. Um, Mr. Powers?
I think the most important thing that we can do for our cities is listen and listen to their needs and help them. And as a former commissioner and, and hope to get back in, the cities that are in District Five, they know that I listen to them. I listened to them when they, when they called me and said that they needed a police car in Whitesburg. And I fought hard and I, and, and I was able to give them a police car in Whitesburg. And Rootville, they needed a, a building torn down and they needed some, a handicap ramp on their stage and they needed some bathrooms and I listened to them. And not only, I, I helped them and went and, and, um, and was able to get the funding for them. Then Whitesburg came back and, and, um, their, their city hall is in trailers and they, they need a new building. And they asked me, Mr. Powers, would you do, um, would you help us, uh, secure the, the, uh, funding for that? And, and I was able to, uh, secure fifty thousand dollars for them to get started with their, um, with their new city hall. I think it's very, very important that we listen to our cities and help them. But, uh, you, some, you've got to be a doer and you've got to be able to go out there and, and understand their needs. And, and I think all the citizens in the cities, they know that I care about them and they know that I have worked with them before. They know that I, I know their needs and they know that they can always call me and I'm advocating for them. And I will be fighting for, for the cities that we have in our district. And we have some great cities and we have some great resources, uh, in our cities and, and, uh, in the District Five. And I'll always listen and I'll always, um, support their needs.
Okay, thank you. So that completes our questions, uh, part of the, of the show, of the candidate forum. Now, uh, we're going to have closing statements, uh, for one minute from each of you. And we'll start with, uh, Mr. Fulford.
I'll say thank you to everybody for, uh, listening in. You know, Carroll County is a wonderful place. The decisions we, we're faced with today and in the future will have a major impact on our, on the lives of those and those of our children. I've helped lead through difficult times and have helped make some difficult decisions. And sometimes they're, they're not always comfortable, but we have to make them. More government is not the answer. However, a great governing body will allow us to provide our citizens the quality of life that they expect and deserve. And with that, uh, this election is about having that right voice to represent our citizens and allowing Carroll County to further prosper. And I humbly ask for your vote and allow me to serve you as District Five Carroll County Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fulford. Next, Mr. Powers, give your one minute closing.
Yes, we have, we have, we are going through some very, very difficult times as our county, as our state and our nation. We need a proven leader, we need a leader that listens, we need a leader that understands land use. We, we need a leader that helps the citizens through difficult times. Because a lot of people, a lot of our citizens have lost their jobs now. A lot of small business, businesses have been shut down for quite a while. And they need a leader that's, that's been in business and, and started their own business and, and has been through some very, very difficult times herself. And, uh, and I am the leader that, um, that, that can get us through. We need a leader that understands the agribusiness, that, that actually produces agri products in, in the county and that actually has a working farm, have over a hundred head of cattle. And, and we build several thousand rolls of hay every year. And we put up other products that, that, that helps our, feed our county, feed our state and feed our nation through the, the cattle industry. So we need a proven leader that, that works hard and I think that they know that I.
Thank you so much, Mr. Powers. Now it's Mr. Reynolds, last minute.
Okay. Well, this election is not about me, it's about you, the county residents and taxpayers. So you will be deciding who will be transparent to you about what is going on. Who brings you proven entire career of conservative government leadership to ensure accountability throughout government? Who brings you an entire career as a government watchdog? And who understands about raising a family here and, and has done so? Who shares your love for our rural lifestyle about farming with a lifetime of such experience? And who's lived here for over forty years and knows this community and also, uh, knows government? So you've elected me, uh, to fill all of the above and I can say I, I love doing that. My entire career as, uh, Deputy Director in the State Department of Audits brought me the experience. But I'm retired now, I'm driven to respond to you and I have the time to respond to you and still uphold those hallmarks of transparency and accountability and good conservative government leadership. So I ask for your vote to reelect me and I promise to represent you well. I won't let you down.
Thank you so much. And that concludes all of our program. Uh, I want to thank all the candidates for attending tonight. I know we had some technical difficulties and, uh, but I really, uh, commend each one of you for taking the time to run for office. It takes a lot of time and dedication just to run for office. And so we are thankful for you. Uh, that's, that's all, folks.